All right, good evening, everyone. Time is 6:30 on February the 15th. I now call this regular meeting of the mayor and council to order. All council members are present. Please rise for a pledge of allegiance followed by an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Jackson, will you lead us in prayer, please?
Heavenly Father, we come to you, thank you for this wonderful day. Heavenly Father, we ask you to come into the midst of this meeting. As any meeting we have, we want you to be in the middle of it. Heavenly Father, we keep, ask you to keep helping us as council members and mayor to do what's best for the city of Social Circle, regardless on what happens. We always want to make sure we do what's best. In your Son Jesus' name, we pray.
Amen. Thank you, Tyson. All right, I have a few announcements to make. Municipal Court, February 16th, 1:00 p.m. in the community room. Planning Commission, February the 22nd, 6:00 p.m. That's at the Middle School Activity Center. Tree Board Meeting, February the 24th, 6:00 p.m. in the community room. Our Council Work Session, March the 3rd, 20, at 6:30 p.m. in the community room also. Main Street Commission Meeting, March 8th, 8:00 a.m. Church at the Grove. Historic Preservation Meeting, March 8th, 6:00 p.m. Community Room. Our next council meeting, depending on action taken tonight by the council, will be scheduled for March 16th, 6:30 p.m. And that's at the Middle School Activity Center. We have presentations, first one being our 2021 Audit.
Hello, I am up here to introduce y'all to Christopher McKellar from Malden and Jenkins. He's here to present our audit. With him is Mallory McCracken. I don't think she's going to come up there.
All right, thank you for having me this evening. My name is Christopher McKellar with Malden and Jenkins, the external auditors for the city. And I'm here to present the audit results for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2021. You should have two documents before you. The annual comprehensive financial report, which I often refer to as the ACFER, and then the auditor's discussion and analysis, which goes through some of the financial highlights, required communications, and results of the audit. I'll stick pretty close to the auditor's discussion and analysis, but certainly if there's any questions on the ACFER, let me know. So if you'll turn to page 2, this gives just general information about Malden and Jenkins and our governmental practice. As you can see there, we audit over 140 ACFER Certificate of Excellence governments. On page 3, this is more information about Malden and Jenkins and some of the services that we provide. And then on page 4, this is where we get to the audit results. As you can see there, the financial statements are the responsibility of management, and our responsibility as external auditors is to issue an opinion on the fair presentation of the financial statements based on our audit. What I'm sure you all would like to know is how did the city do? We did issue an unmodified or clean opinion, which means that the financial statements present fairly in all material respects. On page 5, this gives information about the ACFER. As you can see there, the ACFER goes above and beyond what is required for financial statements. This includes the introductory section and the statistical section. There's a good bit of work that goes into preparing an ACFER, and the city should be commended for their efforts. On page 6, this is some general financial information. As you can see towards the bottom of the page there, the city as a whole or government-wide financial statements had total assets and deferred outflows of resources of approximately 37.8 million, offset by liabilities and deferred inflows of resources of approximately 9.6 million. And this results in a net position of 28.2 million. To further break down the net position, there was approximately 2 million that was restricted and 5.5 million of unrestricted net position. On page 7, the net position increased approximately 1.5 million. And just a few general fund highlights, which is the main operating fund of the city. You could see there the first pie chart for the general fund revenues for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2021. Approximately 81% was taxes, which is to be expected of a city. And then the second pie chart there is just a further breakdown of the general fund taxes, a majority of that being property taxes. On the page 9, general fund expenditures. As you can see there, approximately 24 point, or 24% is general government and 52% is public safety, which here again is typical of a city. And then if we'll skip over, beginning on page 13, is the required communications. I'll hit a couple of these, I won't go through all of them. But on page 14, we encountered no significant difficulties in performing the audit. Jennifer was prepared when we got here. She's forthcoming with all the information, everything we asked for, she's, she has available for us. We had no disagreements with management about the application of accounting principles. Then on page 15, the audit adjustments that we had are in the back of this document, the auditor's discussion and analysis. And we had no, what we call past adjustments or uncorrected misstatements, so all adjustments were made to the financial statements. And we are independent of the city, which is required by AICPA standards and government auditing standards. Then on page 16, we had a couple of material weaknesses, significant deficiencies. I like to point out that these are not fraudulent in nature. These stem from accounting adjustments that we had to make, and we're required by the standards to assess those for control deficiency purposes. The first one there is equity reconciliations. So during our testing, we had to make audit adjustments to the general fund, approximately 178,000 to the opening equity balances, so that they matched the ending balances from the prior year. And this stemmed from a payroll cash account that wasn't being properly recorded. And then we had an audit adjustment in the Main Street Commission Fund of approximately 6,000 to correctly report the opening net position. On page 17, the allowance for doubtful accounts calculation. We were required to make audit adjustments in the water sewer fund, solid waste fund, and other enterprise funds, in total approximately 563,000. And I think this really stemmed from the receivables that were written off in prior years that are put into collections, and it was causing the calculation of the allowance to be overstated. Second one there, capital asset reporting. We had a, an adjustment of approximately 60,000 in the Downtown Development Authority Fund to remove the accumulated depreciation that was recorded on land. Page 18 with liabilities. We had a couple of adjustments here, 26,000 in the general fund to remove amounts that had been recorded for accrued salaries that shouldn't have been recorded at the fund level. Adjustments of 13,000 in the water sewer fund to correctly report the accounts payable, and then an adjustment of approximately 16,000 in the water sewer fund to show the change in accrued interest. One significant deficiency that we reported was with prepaid expenditures. We had to record an audit adjustment of approximately 33,000 in the general fund to properly state the prepaid expenditures. And this stemmed from just using the wrong starting balance in a calculation which threw off the ending balance. On page 19, we had just a few management recommendations or management points. These do not rise to the level of a finding, they are just recommendations that we had as we went through the audit. The first one there is just cybersecurity. This is something that we recommend to all of our clients, is to stay on top of the cybersecurity with monitoring and testing of controls in place. The environment we're in now is becoming more and more remote, so the cybersecurity threat is very prominent. The second one there, outstanding checks. The general fund operating account had approximately 25 checks for $3,700. They were greater than five years old and are required to be issued to the state. And then on page 19, and then continuing to page 20, is the upcoming GASB standards. GASB has been issuing standards left and right over the past 10, 15 years. And I'll just point out a few of them. GASB Statement Number 87 with leases, which will be applicable for next year. This is for a change in how leases are recorded. Now you have capital leases and operating leases. Capital leases have an asset and a liability. Your operating leases are more like rent, they're just annual expenditures. With GASB 87, all leases will be recorded the same, no matter operating or capital, in that they'll have an asset and a liability associated with them. And then along the same lines on page 27, GASB Statement Number 96 with subscription-based information technology arrangements, or most people call them CBITAs. These are any subscriptions that you have for technology. They will be recorded similar to GASB Statement Number 87, where you will have an asset and a liability for any long-term contracts that you have for information technology. And that is all I have, unless there are any specific questions on either document.
Are there any questions for Christopher? Hearing none. Thank you, sir, for the presentation. We appreciate you, and thank you for the report.
Thank you.
Very enlightening. Thank you also, Jennifer, for your participation. Okay, employee introduction recognition, I don't believe we have any tonight, brings us to downtown rundown.
Downtown rundown for February, we had several merchants in downtown hosted a chocolate walk on Thursday, February the 10th, from 6 to 8 o'clock. There were eight businesses that participated in this event, and there was a great turnout. One of the, we saw a lot of local people, but one of the common things amongst all the merchants that participated was that we also saw a lot of people that weren't from Social Circle, which was really great. So everyone was pretty pleased with that. The next Coffee and Conversations that we're having, excuse me, will take place on February 22nd at 8:30 a.m., and will be hosted this month by Pinnacle Bank. We'd like everyone that can to attend and spread the word about that, because it's a great networking event. And then the last on my rundown is the next Main Street, actually will be the first Main Street event for 2022, will be the Beer Crawl. Plans are underway for this St. Patrick's Day event that we're going to have in downtown Social Circle. This is a new event that hasn't been done before, but rest assured, we are planning this event with the safety of those that are participating in mind. So still in the planning phase of that, and I'll provide more updates through my weekly report as we get closer to that event. That's all I have for the rundown tonight.
So the Chocolate Crawl was from merchants?
Yes.
It's great.
Yes.
He says a beer crawl?
Yes.
What date is it going to be on, St. Patrick's?
On St. Patrick's Day.
Anything else for Amber? Thank you.
Thank you.
We didn't have anyone sign up for citizen requests. Are there any council requests? I would like to recognize the fact that we have several members here tonight from the current leadership Walton class, so thank you, guys, for being here. I know it's a requirement, and I'm glad you chose us as your city to attend. Next up, we have agenda approval. I don't know of anything that needs to be added, so I'll entertain a motion.
Have a motion to approve the event in a second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next up, public hearings. There are none that I'm aware of. Leads us to financial statements.
Okay, so at this time during the year, we should be at about 58%. For our general fund revenues, we are at 70%. This time last year, we were at 70%. For our general fund expenses, overall is at 56. Capital expenses are at 54, and operating are at 57. This time last year, we were in the same spot. For our water fund revenues overall, we are at 41%. We've not received any GFA funding yet this year. And then we are at 50% overall for our operating revenues. This time last year, we were at 42%. For our expenses overall, we are at 36%. Of that, 19% is capital and 54% is operating. This time last year, we were at 68%. For gas, our revenues are at 63%, this time last year at 46%. For expenses, 65 overall, 70 capital and 65 operating. This time last year, we were at 55%. Solid waste at 62%. Revenues at this time last year, we were at 58%. For expenses, 52%. And last year, 48%. Anyone have any questions?
Any questions for Jennifer? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next up, we have the consent agenda. Mr. Tyler, will you guide us through that, please?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. We have seven items on the consent agenda for this evening. The first is an approval of the minutes of the mayor and council regular meeting of January 18th, 2022. Item number two is the approval of the minutes of the mayor and council call meeting, special call meeting that was held on February 3rd, 2022. Number three is approval of the minutes of the mayor and council work session that was on February 3rd, 2022. Item number four is approval of the minutes of the executive session that was held on February 3rd, 2022. The next item is an approval of the budget amendment for the Boxwood Gas Installation. We've talked about this project at the last, last two city council meetings, and this is the budget amendment that I should pay for all the work that we're doing out there. And this is to, it's a budget amendment in the amount of $109,338 to be allocated to the gas fund, around the gas fund balance. The next item is an approval of engineering services for the fiscal year 22 water system improvements. We have three water system improvements that we are looking to get some engineering, design, and construction support for. One is for the South Cherokee Road to Spring Street Tank Connection, and the second one is for the Brookstone Office Park North Cherokee Connection. And the third item is to put in a water main on Social Circle Parkway South from East Hightower to Thurman Backus Road. This, this particular one is going to be funded by a project that has yet to be closed, but, but we expect to be closed here pretty soon. And then the last item is an approval to apply for CDBG funds for the market of states and Rontha Road projects, and also to bend the budget for $25,000 for a grant rider and DDOs. This is part of our efforts to continually seeking to improve the, our network of sewage pipes throughout the city, and this will go a long way in helping us hopefully get the money to do the work. And so I recommend approval.
Thank you, Eric. Any questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next up, under Old Business First Item, consideration of parks permit policy rules for city parks.
So, Mayor, the last time it was actually, this was actually discussed at a city council meeting, was at the November 16th, 2021 meeting. City council reviewed that, and some changes were suggested to the current draft, with those ready for review for the December meeting. This policy then got, got actually tabled for both December and the January meetings. And so we are recommending that we go ahead with approving the parks policy with the items that we discussed in November, and I will, you know, just for the sake of public transparency, talk about what those, what those changes were, since we talked about that in public back in November. One was that we add a third level to community and private events, and this level is for 100 or less participants in any community or private event, with the fee schedule was updated to reflect this addition. The second was the hourly fee for the use of ball field lights at Burks Park was changed to a flat fee of $100. The third was there's an addition under the fee section of the agreement, giving the city the ability to waive fees for social circle, social circle city schools to use Veterans Park for school sporting events. And also included under the fee section was the ability of the city social circle to waive fees at Veterans Park for the use of the park by any veteran service organization. At the February 3rd work session, these items were discussed, and we agreed to move forward with those. And it was also suggested that we add language to the policy that allows the city to waive fees for church-related events at Burks Park. Since we discussed this, actually had some conversation with the city attorneys, and they are suggesting some language in there, to not make it specific to churches, but to, because that has a very defined meaning, but to have it, have it set for any worship-based organization or similar groups, okay? I will add to that, just want to, and we do recommend, we understand the intent of doing that, and staff and city attorneys are, are good with that. I would remind the city council to consider what that means, in terms of who may be eligible for that, and just, you know, just throw it out there that, that worship-based groups could also include some groups that you may not intend on having this applied to. You know, in particular, it would apply to Satanist groups. It would also apply to atheist-based organizations. So just want to make sure that everybody is okay with that, and just throwing that out there just for public transparency, but we do recommend approval of the parks policy.
Let me ask you a question of the attorneys. The, the language that was proposed earlier today for, for this, written into this, Eric just brought up a point, is there any consideration to give to that, or would you give any consideration to rewording what you had earlier today? Not putting you on the spot or anything, but...
There's, there's, there's got to be, it's got to be beyond the normal definition of Christian church, is, is the, is the issue. The downside thoughts about what that might entail is, is probably interpretive. We did provide some language that's broader, you know, to include houses of worship and similar civic institutions primarily located within the city limits. And so you're really looking at worship-based. I mean, I think we could probably exclude the atheist group if we, if we were interpreting that language, but certainly it would broaden the groups that would qualify from a worship standpoint and not be exclusive to Christians, so.
This is only for Burksfield, right?
You've got a general, you know, this is the freebie. And, and so the, so the Supreme Court has issued a really good opinion that the fact that you are a church doesn't mean you get hurt by that fact, and so you can open up to, to this type of accommodation to churches. It's a really good opinion, so it doesn't discriminate in reverse. And so it's, it's, your thought is good when it can be enforced. It's, the, the thought of having folks that think differently use the parks, whether it's free or otherwise, is going to happen. So you, you know, the question is, are you going to provide it for churches? And then, and then it does open up a bigger group on a free basis, is all we're really talking about. The downside of, of having folks that don't exactly see eye to eye is something we can't as a government restrict anyway. And so it's, so those, those things, once we have public parks, they're open to the public regardless of their beliefs. We were just trying to stay away from, a lot of folks get targeted towards churches and trying to take your ordinances and make, just make us spend legal fees over issues that aren't really, are just PR points, and we're just trying to avoid that is really the reason for our suggestion.
Okay, before I ask for a motion on this ordinance, Jay or Tony, will you read, read that into the ordinance so council will know what we're approving tonight?
Before you do that, is that, can we refer back to churches that are located, well, or the organizations that are located in Social Circle?
Yes, it says that.
It says that?
So the difference, the ordinance as, as prepared for you has in it the word church. And everywhere it, and the, the place where it is located is to allow for non-fees, it's in that non-fee category, and it uses the word church. We're sub- We're substituting in the place of that word, church, houses of worship, or other, or, or, not other, or similar civic institutions primarily located within the city limits.
It's on page, uh, page five of the, uh, the document, you have to find it. Not that wording, but this is the part, previous wording, I haven't even seen before, I thought it was...
It's actually the page that starts, the damage deposit should be, single line at the top is the paragraph underneath it. Okay, uh...
Mayor, Mayor, before, and, and this was based on, uh, Councilmember Price's question. Uh, I think, I think to achieve what she said, we use the word primarily. That word primarily should be deleted from the recommendation. It should say houses of worship, or similar civic institutions located within the city limits.
So, I got another question, because if we say located in the city limits, Knox Chapel is not in the city limits. But they are, they have a social circle address, uh, basically is what it says, but it's not in the city limits.
Now you're out of the legal, you're out of... You're good either way.
Okay.
You can, you can extend it, put that word primarily back in and include the ones that are armed and, uh...
Just long say, it still says they're located in Social Circle.
Yeah, but the city limit, let's say Social Circle.
It doesn't have to be the city limits.
Let's say Social Circle, 'cause most of them have Social Circle.
Yeah, that's a, that's a broader base.
So instead of saying located inside the city of Social Circle, it's just gonna say located in...
Social Circle. Social Circle. Not...
Not necessarily within the city limits, but within the three zero zero two five zip code.
Okay, that'd be better.
Okay.
You wanna read that into the, uh, record there before we make a motion?
Here, here is, here is, here's what I understand, is houses of worship or similar civic institutions located within Social Circle. And, and it doesn't go into detail about what that, but the intent is that it be within the postal zip code of Social Circle.
I have one more question. So we have a hundred dollar light fee. So typically, if Knox Chapel decide to use the park to do movie night, they only turn the lights on for the cleanup period, because they wait until night to show the movie, and then they turn the light on for ten, fifteen minutes, everybody goes home. Is that including a hundred dollars, or it...
If you're waiving the fees, you're waiving it too, aren't you?
I mean, I...
Yeah, technically, you're right, Councilmember Shelton, but I don't wanna lock us in to waiving fees for somebody that's gonna have the nights, uh, the lights on for six, seven hours all night long.
So could we put a minimum, could we put a minimum of thirty minutes?
Or we could do that, or we could just add language in there that gives, um, staff the white, the right to waive, uh, the light fee.
Okay.
I think that's probably already, it hits around that in here, whether it's that exact language or not.
Um, I don't think it says that for light fees, because light fees are very specific.
Yeah, it says a hundred dollars.
Yeah. I think that would be the easiest thing to do, just give us the ability to, to waive those, if, if, you know, depending on the circumstances.
Who's gonna make this motion?
Well, you need, you need the attorneys to read that language in, into it, uh, just like they did the other.
So there, there is a draft ordinance that you're looking at, and, uh, word church in, in this, in the motion would be changed to houses of worship or similar civic institutions located within Social Circle. And you would add to the light, uh, fee section that the light fee may be waived upon application by, uh, the city staff. And I, I would, I would, I mean, change that, not just city staff, but it'd be the city manager or, or its designee.
I think that's the right way to go. That way it gives us maximum flexibility. All right.
So we're ready for a motion?
Do it. Y'all believe we've been missing with this long enough?
Make the motion, um, that the attorney read.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Jackson, a second by Councilmember Shelton. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Finally, we have parks, right? All right, next up on our agenda, uh, board appointments. Um, I don't know who is, uh, if we're ready to make those, but why don't we just walk through each one of the ones that are listed here, and we'll see if anybody wants to make any, any appointments. First group being the cemetery.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to reappoint Wayne McMillan as chair, David Jordan, uh, as a member of the cemetery committee. Uh, any further discussion?
Do, do we appoint the chair? I mean, you said as chair, or just reappoint him?
It's, it's not, I don't think it's in the code for that particular one.
Okay, so we're just appointing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I, I know he said chair, I was making sure that we don't...
Yeah, just, I would think just for him to continue as chair.
Okay.
All right, uh, been a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on. Next, uh, next one up, we have the Downtown Development Authority of Social Circle.
Mayor, can I have a suggestion here?
Shelton.
Um, I think that the list that's presented in the agenda report
Mm-hmm.
um, is merely to, uh, merely point out, uh, whose, whose appointments are expiring.
Mm-hmm.
And I know we talked about in work session about how some of these boards, uh, require residency or some other stipulation for serving on the board. Um, I think that's just something we need to remember as we go through this, because I know that there's, there's one member on the tree board that does not live in the city limits, as we discussed in, in work session.
Yep.
Right.
And we've got one that doesn't wanna be reappointed.
Yep.
One of the tree board?
No, we're on a planning commission.
Okay.
We're gonna wait.
Okay, on the, uh, Downtown Development Authority, it looks like two terms are expiring, and there is a vacancy on that board.
Um, I'd like to make the motion to reappoint Mike Owens, Tim Hutchison, and then appoint, uh, Taylor Morris.
Okay, all of those, it looks like we need to make an adjustment. Uh, Susan, am I correct, on the three-year terms need to be moved to four years?
Yes, sir, all of them to be four-year terms.
Okay. Uh, so we have, uh, motion on the floor for those appointments. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Uh, Historic Preservation Commission, looks like there are three terms expiring this, this month.
Reappoint James Williams, Lynn Mills, and...
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Uh, next up, the Housing Authority, those are appointments by, by the mayor. Uh, I've spoken with both of those individuals, Markeah Cushion and Paul Posner. They are both willing to, um, to serve again. Um, that being said, uh, I'd like to entertain a motion for that appointment.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Uh, next up, we have the Library. Okay, sounds like we're skipping that one. Uh, Plan, Planning Commission?
Um, I'll make the motion to reappoint Scott Gaither, and I'm gonna table, uh, making a motion to reappoint Florin Phillips.
So I'll have to table, or just...
Or, no, just don't leave her off for now.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion to reappoint Scott Gaither, second by Teresa. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Um, next up, we have the Main Street Commission.
Um, I will make a motion to reappoint, uh, Dwayne Jones and Susan Pharaoh, and then appoint Keith Bell and Judy Braswell.
The, the two appointments, Nathan, are you putting those into the vacant positions?
Yeah, sure, yeah, that's fine. Put them in the vacancies, I get, or... 'Cause the term, when do those terms run out?
How many vacancies, is there any left?
There's only two vacancies.
Two, two vacancies on that board, and one, two, three, four, that are reappointments or term expiring.
So you still getting, what was that, what? Angela Cobb.
And then, okay, and I'll make an appointment also for Angela Cobb.
Now, these are also ones that, um, need to be respective of their bylaws, and I, I can't quote them, but there has to be a certain mix of business owners, residents of the city, and one other qualifier. Um, Amber, can you, uh, can you address that?
At least, at least four members have to be residents, two members will be business owners, one member shall own property in the Main Street district. One business will serve, one might be seen, one from BBA, and one from the Planning Commission. And then the city manager, service representative, city manager.
Okay, um...
I believe we're there.
Do we, uh, are we meeting those qualifications with these appointments? I'm assuming so.
Uh, I know we are, the residents, um, the businesses downtown, um, adding, uh, Keith Bell, owns Tin Plate, and then, um, we were adding, uh, or Susan Pharaoh. We were counting as a downtown business owner as well, I believe.
Angela, um, Kelly, she owns her own business.
Angela, what's her name?
Cobb.
Cobb, Angela Cobb.
Angela Cobb, Kelly.
Okay. All right, for clarity, would, would...
You want me to say that again?
Will you restate the motion?
I will. I make a motion to reappoint Dwayne Jones, um, Susan Pharaoh, and then appoint Keith Bell, Judy Braswell, and Angela Cobb.
Okay. There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Um, discussion. So who are we leaving off? Because I see John Miller is not being appointed, or...
Marcia Peters.
Marcia Peters.
Right, those, those appointments are still open.
I think one of the things we were taking into consideration was just attendance.
But we, I thought, I thought we talked about the fact that it was COVID. Um, and on the attendance part for those years.
Does that answer your, your question, Tyson?
That answered my question, but I think I would like, I guess, appoint John Miller back, since we're not diversifying the council, the board that much, right, by adding one. Um, only one minority. I mean, the, I, I personally went to a meeting with them, and it's, and I think the board needs to be diversified a lot more than it is. I mean, we're not, that's, appointing, what we're pointing at, we're not diversifying that board. I mean, I'm just, just, just saying.
So do you wanna leave some spots open?
Let's, without modifying your motion, because we've got a motion and a second on the floor.
Okay.
No further discussion. I'll entertain a motion on, the motion that's on the floor, I mean, a, a vote. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, that motion carries three to one. Um, Tyson, if you would like to offer your motion, now you can.
Um, I guess I'll just make a motion to reappoint John Miller, um, on the Main Street.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second? All right, that motion fails for lack of a second.
I'd like to make another motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to, to appoint Sharon Durden on the Main Street, or Griffin now.
Second.
Sharon Griffin?
Griffin.
And she is to replace...
John Miller, only open vacancy. 'Cause Peters, we covered, right? Did we cover Peters?
She ain't gonna, we ain't gonna afford her.
Marcia?
She wasn't on there.
She was not reappointed tonight. She is up for reappointment on this.
Okay, so I'll...
But the ones we've covered tonight.
If we added Sharon, that would take care of all the vacancies and the reappointment positions, I think.
Because we just appointed somebody in front of Peters, right?
Cobb.
Cobb, right?
Okay. So Sharon Griffin?
Yes.
You, you second? Okay.
Okay, and that appointment is replacement for John Miller, correct?
Yep.
All right, we've got a motion, Steve, second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, next item up, uh, Social Circle Development Authority. Looks like we've got two terms expiring and three vacancies on that board.
Uh, I'll make a motion to, uh, reappoint Mamie Phillips and Betty Ray, and, uh, I'll, uh, make the motion to also appoint, uh, Tamika Nash and Cody Morris.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Rosemary.
All right, and, uh, the last one, the tree board. Looks like we have three that are expiring.
Uh, I'll make the motion to reappoint Barbara Sams and Edith Foreman. Um, yeah. And Rosemary Sells, I think, lives out of the city.
But she can serve until we decide, since we're not replacing her, she can serve until that time?
Yes, I mean, yeah, uh, all of, all of our boards serve until such time that there's a report.
Require myself, so... Yeah, that's attorney question.
Well, she still owns property in the city until it sells.
Treehorn, I got her.
Yeah, until she, yeah, until property sells.
Yeah, she's still concerned till the property sells, 'cause she, she still has property in the city there.
This isn't, um, according to the code, it says they have residence in the city.
Not property.
Not property ownership.
That's correct.
All right, so we've got...
But there is, there is an exception.
All right.
An exception to this can be made to a one person that does not reside within the city in consideration of their...
Well, she's a master gardener, so...
Yeah, she would, she would definitely fit that.
Is she still wanting to serve? Yes, I had a conversation with her, um, she's happy to serve, she just raised the residency question with me, and I'm sure that you guys...
Okay.
She's a master gardener.
Can I change my motion?
Modify, yeah.
Yep, um, I'll say, uh, make a motion to reappoint Barbara Sams, Edith Foreman, and Rosemary Sells.
Second.
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 Okay, got a motion and multiple seconds. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right. Thank you, everyone. Next item up, uh, new business. We have, uh, need a motion for an authorization to change the March twenty-two regular meeting date from March fifteenth to March sixteenth. date from March fifteenth to March sixteenth.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Ladies and gentlemen, we do have a need for executive session this afternoon, I'll entertain a motion for potential litigation, real estate, and personnel.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.